Colleen Feige, I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of Edina, and I'd like to welcome you to our City Council Candidate Forum. We just had a candidate forum with Mayor Hovland. That was our first virtual candidate forum. And normally, I say what the league is about, but I think that this deserves something a little different. I want to say some thank yous. I want to say thank you to the community who said, "We want to have a virtual candidate forum. We're worried about the public safety and so forth." And you know what? We made it happen. So here we are with a virtual candidate forum, and I hope it follows as well as did the one with Mayor Hovland. I also want to thank the community for sending in a lot of questions for the candidates. That's what makes candidate forums so wonderful, and you've really stepped up to do that. I think it's also important to thank the many members of the League of Women Voters who did a lot to make this happen in about a week, especially Susan Clark, who is our Voter Service Chair, and others that have worked to get this done. A special thank you to Scott Denfeld, who is the host and Edina's city employee who's making this go smoothly. Thank you very much, Scott. And to the candidates, thank you for running for City Council. Thank you for participating in this forum so that we, as a league, can do what we tried to do to empower voters by giving them answers to questions they may have that you may not have been able to answer before, and for participating in this forum. Thank you so much. With those things, one other piece I want to mention is that tomorrow is the first day that you can vote absentee at City Hall. And if you have requested an absentee ballot, tomorrow the absentee ballots will be gunned being sent by the Secretary of State's office. So the important thing, of course, is be sure you vote by November 3rd, however you do it. And then, I would like to turn this over to Peggy Quam, who is our moderator. And a big thank you to you, Peggy. You're making this look so easy. So she is a member of the League of Women Voters, Minnetonka, Eden Prairie, and Hopkins. And Peggy, with that, and to all of you, thank you very much, and enjoy the forum. Thanks, Peggy.
Thank you, Colleen, for that excellent introduction. The purpose of this evening's forum is to provide an opportunity to hear the candidates for the City of Edina City Council. They will discuss issues that are important to you. We will try to cover as many issues as possible in the time we have. If your questions are not addressed tonight, feel free to contact the candidates directly. All candidates who filed for office and who will be on the November 3rd ballot were invited to this forum. One candidate elected not to participate in the forum. I will now explain the rules and format of tonight's forum. All candidates will remain seated throughout the entire candidate forum. Speaking order was assigned before the forum by LWV Edina and will rotate with each question. Each candidate will have two minutes to make an opening statement and one minute to answer a question sent out in advance. Candidates will have one minute to answer each question submitted by the audience. Candidates will then each have two minutes to make a closing statement. League volunteers will time candidate responses and indicate to candidates when they have 30 seconds remaining and when they must stop. The moderator will ask all questions. LWV Edina determines which questions will be asked and attempts in good faith to cover the topics of interest indicated by the submitted audience questions. All written questions become the property of LWV Edina. Due to COVID-19, this forum is being livestreamed virtually now by the City of Edina on Edina TV, Comcast Channel 813 High Definition, and Comcast Channel 16 Standard Definition, the city website www.edinamen.gov, and on Facebook, City of Edina MN. It will be available on Edina TV YouTube the next day as well as on the League of Women Voter Edina's website, lweedina.org. A schedule for the rebroadcast on the Edina TV times and dates on Comcast channels is presented following this forum. The forum will also be available for viewing afterwards on the city's website and Facebook, Edina TV YouTube, and the LWV Edina website. All questions were collected electronically from the general community before this forum, and there is no live audience. Now I will introduce the six candidates that we have present for the forum in alphabetical order. So just smile, and we'll move on after the introduction to the opening remarks. So you don't need to say anything during this part. So first, we have Joshua Alberg, Rhonda Bland, Ukasha Dekane, Carolyn Jackson, Janet Katouy, and James Pierce. The candidates will now present two-minute opening statements. Please answer in the order you are called upon. Please speak directly into your microphone when responding. And we will begin with Rhonda Bland. Go ahead, Rhonda.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Rhonda Bland, and I'm running for Edina City Council. I've lived in Edina for almost 50 years. My children grew up here, and they're graduates of Edina High School. This city has been my home my whole adult life. You will notice I'm probably the oldest candidate this evening, and I want to remind you, with age comes experience, and I believe wisdom. I also want you to know I'm a nonpartisan candidate. I have never registered with either party, and I am rejecting all endorsements. This is an apolitical office, and no candidate should be indebted to any political party or organization. My focus is the City of Edina and serving all its residents. I am truly an independent. I hope tonight, others will join me in this commitment and not accept financial support or endorsements from party-affiliated individuals or groups. I've had strong experience as a neighborhood activist. Most recently, last year, the city wanted to build a 10,000-square-foot water treatment plant in a park in our neighborhood. My neighbors asked me to give voice to their concerns. Based on my legal research and policy and security issues, the council voted to move the plant to the Southdale site where they had started. Communication from the city was woefully lacking. Frequent, forthright, and timely communication is critical and will be a priority for me as a city council member. I have a holistic perspective of Edina that covers many years. I have a long view. I can appreciate where we were, where we are today, and where we need to go. I'm focused on our city. This is our home. This is not meant to be a stepping stone for higher office. I want to dedicate this chapter of my life to Edina. I want to give back to the city that has been so good to me.
Thank you. Our next candidate is James Pierce.
Hi, I'm James Pierce, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and for all of you watching at home. We're in the midst of a global pandemic that is wreaking havoc on our personal lives and our business community. At the same time, our country is engulfed in a much-needed conversation about social change. But let there be no doubt, we live in a great community, a community where my wife Stephanie and I are both actively involved. We live in a community with great schools, where my three daughters are thriving. We live in a community with great parks, a lifeline throughout the pandemic. We live in a community with leaders who had the foresight to establish a Race and Equity Task Force, which I was humbled to be able to co-lead. Perhaps even more importantly, we have a community of leaders, like my fellow candidates and many of you, who step up to answer the call when needed. Over the past few months, I've spoken to many of you about complex challenges we need to solve. One theme continues to surface. To meet the needs of today and prepare for the future, we need new perspectives. As Edina continues to grow and change, I bring that much-needed perspective, both as a global strategic business leader and as someone who has lived in many communities very different from Edina. I value many of the traditions of Edina and will work hard towards a future for everyone. I have the unique perspective to solve affordable housing by ensuring we have healthy housing cycles with attractive options that work for all income levels and across all stages of life, to ensure that our community promotes vitality and purpose as our seniors enjoy their golden years, and finally, ensure that Edina becomes the most welcoming community in the state of Minnesota for all of its residents. If you trust me with your vote, and I am blessed to earn a seat at the table, I will ensure that all voices are heard, and I will always represent the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'd like to hear from Janet Katouy.
Sorry, it took me a minute to get the unmute button. Thank you, the League of Women Voters, and thank you for the voters out there. I care deeply about the City of Edina. Over the past nine years, I have lived in Edina and witnessed the rapid growth, the amount of high-density housing in the southern quadrant, and significant people moving into Edina. As a government employee and city volunteer and parent, I have the skills and the experience necessary to serve our city. I moved into Edina because of its great public schools. My three adult children have all gone through Edina Public Schools. I served as president of Southview Middle School. I'm also currently serving on the Housing Task Force, which is engaged in finding options for all our residents who wish to live in Edina. I understand the need of the ongoing quality, and I also understand Edina schools more and accessible for all of us. I run because I want all of us to be able to enjoy this community, which is a beautiful community. I have been engaged at the city for several years, and I would like to be able to continue to bring forward diverse voices. I am running to be that voice on the Edina City Council. I also have served on the Communications Feedback Group. I have served on the Business and Energy Group. And all these combined, both my private and public sector experience, makes me a very well-rounded candidate for this time on City Council. I've also contributed on the race and equity issue. And as we know, COVID and the racial unrest that has encumbered our country truly calls for someone who is able to bring those voices and represent options to be able to solve the problems. In a moment of crisis, it's also a moment of opportunity to bring about change. And today, I ask for your vote, and I hope to earn it on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear a strong announcement.
Hi, thank you to the League of Women Voters and to everyone who have coordinated this event today. My name is Ukasha Dekane. I'm running for Edina City Council. I'm running to bring a strong, diverse voice to policy-level decision-making and ensure all voices and opinions of residents are heard. In my native language, the word "Edina" translates to "our home," a translation that's fitting when I think all Edina have done for me and for my wife as we raised our beautiful daughters in this beautiful town. I am not a politician, but I am a passionate resident who wants to do his part to keep Edina a premier place to live, raise a family, and also work and retire. I am an empathetic listener, a passionate citizen, an action-oriented individual. By hosting tea and talk all across Edina, helping Edina youth become active citizens and also families thrive, and serving on Energy and Environment Commission, I have learned the power of communities coming together to do an improved policies and solutions as we navigate through these complicated times and a time of economic uncertainty. I want to bring... I believe that my perspective as a young millennial, experienced, someone with a working-class background, need to be represented in the Edina City Council. I was brought to this campaign by four great questions that needs our time and efforts and energy. That is, does the Edina City Council have a diverse voice? Are we physically responsible as a city and achieving the ends of the residents? Are we responsible and achieving the ends of the residents? Are we using data in our decision-making process? Does the City of Edina have a climate action plan? Those are the questions that needs our time and energy, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next, Carolyn Jackson.
Good evening, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this forum together and for the city staff, also for your work, and for the love of God. Thank you very much, and thank you for building this conference. I'm Carolyn Jackson, and I'm running for Edina City Council. Our family moved to Edina in 2000 with a great school, the neighborhood parks, and the strong and beautiful community.
Carolyn, I'm going to interrupt you a minute. We're having trouble with the sound, so I don't know if you can speak into the mic a little better.
Yeah, let me...
This is better.
So can you hear me now? Is it better like this? Okay, thank you. Yeah, you know, I'm not running for my microphone. I apologize. So we moved to Edina in 2000 with a great school, the beautiful parks, and lived in big cities and lived in small cities. And I'm so glad that we chose Edina. I'm an attorney. I've worked in municipal finance and have advocated for cities and voting rights. And also, you can't hear me? Oh, gee. Help!
Carolyn, you could try not using your headphones. You could try not using your headphones and just use the microphone from your laptop. That may help.
...your opening statement, and then we'll get back to Carolyn once she gets her mic set up. So go ahead, Josh.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Josh Alberg, and I want to be your next City Council member. Before I begin, I want to thank everyone, including the League of Women Voters and the candidates for their time tonight. My background is not in commissions or appointments, though I have sought to involve myself in these ways. I have, however, been actively involved in Edina for several years and have led grassroots efforts to help engage the community in policy that best benefits the residents. I'm not running with the heavy support of experienced partisan campaigners. I'm a resident like you, and I'm here to represent you. My perspectives on affordable housing and development are a little bit more nuanced. I know the difference between vision and intention, the idea and the reason for doing something, and outcomes including consequences. Outcomes matter. I'll ask questions. That's who I am. If we're doing it, we need to do it right. We need to ask the questions, to test the assumptions, and make sure that the actions will lead to desired outcomes without negative unintended consequences. I hear a lot about affordable housing, and that is very, very important. What I don't hear a lot about are other concerns: taxes, traffic, whether people feel safe walking their dog, bringing their kids to the park, leaving their house for the weekend. I'm concerned about redevelopment in our neighborhood, tearing down more affordable homes thereby increasing property taxes for long-term residents. I worry about the loss of green space. I worry about the city's debt, $100 million in unfunded capital improvement projects, overuse of TIF, city facilities with health, safety, and ADA issues. These are all real concerns. What are the residents getting for it? What kind of leadership are we getting from City Hall? Are their interests first in mind, or is our council focused on future residents? Are today's residents being listened to and their views being honored? I know it's like to fight City Hall and win. I know how to work with a broad coalition of residents and ask questions. Some of my fellow candidates would not have the support of the current council members if they demonstrated a difference in opinion. That's how I'm different. I'm not a single issue. I'm apolitical. I'm not an ideologue. My only ideology is good process, thoughtful, resident-driven discussion from the onset, and responsible municipal governance. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go back to Carolyn Jackson. And Scott, if you have any hints if she's having trouble, feel free to speak up. Thanks. Go ahead, Carolyn. And your microphone is off right now, Carolyn.
Can you hear me at all?
Now we can hear you, Carolyn.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. I'm Carolyn Jackson, and I'm running for Edina City Council. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this together at the last minute of an online forum. And thank you for all the work you've done. Our family moved to Edina in fact 2000 with a great school, the beautiful neighborhood parks, and the strong and beautiful community. I've lived in big cities and I've lived in small cities and the fair grass which was the end of the neighborhood. I'm an attorney. I've worked in municipal finance and have advocated for cities and for voting rights. I've also volunteered extensively in the community. One of the wishes of health, president of the countryside charity organization, chair of the Valley Middle School of Life Council. I'm the chair of the Energy and Environment Commission in the city, and I'm vice president of the United City Council. My experience in all these different opportunities has taught me a lot about the values of our city. I know that we value a green environment. We value Edina lifelong learning, and we value high-quality city service. As I've been out campaigning, I've been reminded of another thing about Edina doing Zoom calls and walking in the neighborhood. And I'm reminded, this is a community of very engaged citizens. And that is a wonderful aspect of this which makes this such a great place to live. I have been asked to run, and it would be a big honor to represent me on the United City Council. And I look forward to hearing your questions from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn, your sound is very poor from my end, so it might be better if you called in. Scott, what do you think?
Carolyn, I was just going to recommend that if you have a phone, you could still stay... Well, actually, before we try that, I would like you to try one thing and just try removing your headphones from your... I don't know if you're on a computer or a mobile device, but try unplugging them, and let's see if the microphone itself works better.
Um, I don't know how to get the camera...
That is much better already.
It's better already?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
So I would just go with that. I think that will take care of it.
Okay, we'll continue now with Carolyn's setup changes. So now we'll begin the question section of the forum. Each candidate will have one minute to respond, and I will announce the order in which you respond. The following question was sent out in advance. What do you believe your role is as a City Council member in incorporating racial equity into the city's policies? And we will start with James Pierce. Turn on your mic, James.
Here we go. Thank you. The council did a great job in establishing the Race and Equity Task Force prior to 2017, and I was proud to lead that work. As a task force, we put forth 21 recommendations to address various aspects of racial inequity. Our recommendations included a wide range of actions from hiring a race and equity leader and making facilities feel more welcoming to changes in the police that would add transparency and foster more trust within the community. It's the role of the council to ensure that all of those recommendations are properly assessed and implemented. This was very challenging work, but as a council, we have to exhibit the fortitude to deliver against the promise of eliminating racial bias in our community and in city government.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Janet Katouy.
Thank you. This is a follow-up as to what James Pierce has already stated. The Race and Equity Task Force was established to be able to address racial disparities and treatment of minorities in our community. And I believe the 21 recommendations were terrific. If I were to be fortunate enough to be sitting on council, the one recommendation that I would like to advocate for is definitely increase police accountability and transparency. When it comes to the stops and such as that are being done, the recommendation was that data should be collected. I believe at this point, it's still not happening, but that will be one data point that truly informs how we are doing, how we're faring on, and honestly, trying to be able to address our issues. So my role will be still to insist on collecting data to ensure fairness and equality for all in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Carolyn Jackson. Turn on your mic. It's muted right now.
The City Council sets the tone and the context of the city. Equity needs to imbue everything that we do with all the citizens of Edina. For me, what equity means is what is fair. And that's the way I look at it. Every voice matters. Equity is an important part of the work that I do, which is why in 2012, there was a question about voter suppression coming about. I was a leader in the state that put together statewide coalitions. We recruited Arnie Carlson, my person, and we recruited Arnie Carlson on Walton, Montville. I debated across the state on 10,000 people to stop voter suppression because every vote matters. And again, very difficult numbers to win. Every voice matters, what is fair. The Race and Equity Task Force did a great job of setting this up. We've got a lot of work to do in the community board, but equity is part of everything that I do and will drive my experience in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn, your sound is still not very good. So if you could call in, I think we should try that. We'll move on to the next candidate.
Where is the phone? Ukasha Dekane.
Yeah, that's a good question. So the role of the City Council on the race and equity is to hold the staff accountable, and for them, the City Council as well be accountable. So if I'm lucky enough to get elected, I'll ensure the Race and Equity Task Force is within the timeline. And as the reports that have been made on the race and equity, there is some items that was timelined that says "still in progress." So making sure and ensuring the things that we say on the task force reports need to be followed up. I will ensure adequate resources are located to achieve the desired outcome and make sure data is collected to the council so that the council can make and inform decisions about the public safety.
Thank you. Next is Joshua Alberg.
Thanks for the question. I think the council has the obligation to create an inclusive and welcoming city to people of all walks of life, religions, and races and ethnicities. The council should observe the obligation and use this lens when evaluating decisions that can positively or adversely affect residents. It's going to take work, but that work is well worth it. We also have the recommendation from the Race and Equity Task Force, which James mentioned earlier, and I believe we need to follow those recommendations. I'd also add that it's incumbent upon us as council members to ensure that we have access to all the amenities in our city for all persons in the community. Bramer's a great example of this Bramer's a great example of this, having not been brought up to ADA compliance standards.
All right, our final candidate to respond to the advanced question is Rhonda Bland.
Thank you. This is actually a very important and good question. I'm not a person of color. I'm not more likely to be pulled over or arrested than the average person. I don't know what that's like. When I first moved here five decades ago, Edina was really different. Certain neighborhoods wouldn't have welcomed me and my family because we're Jewish. When my children were excluded on the playground, it broke my heart. I say this not to create a false equivalency, but to demonstrate that I am empathetic toward issues of racial discrimination, and I have seen Edina make tremendous progress. I believe in our people, and I know we can continue to move forward. Last week, I met with Edina Patrol Officer Darren Davis, who happens to be African-American. I felt he was uniquely positioned to address the intersection of race and policing in Edina. It's this kind of due diligence, seeking out voices from all relevant stakeholders, that will enable the council to find equitable answers to questions from housing to development to policing.
Thank you. I will now ask questions submitted by the general public in advance of this forum. Each candidate has one minute to answer a question unless I specify less, and I will announce the order in which you are to respond. So the first question is, what is your plan to maintain fiscal responsibility and a balanced budget on behalf of Edina taxpayers? Where would you focus in the budgeting process? And our first response will be from Ukasha Dekane.
Yes, it's a great question again. So my plan is to ensure, like, I'm a nonprofit leader, and I've served in different boards and commissions, including a state board. Every time we have a meeting, we have an item in that agenda where there is a specified budgeting process. So we need the city council to be transparent and have that budget on every city council meeting. I'll ensure we have a task force that will be consisted of a community members and residents that can ensure the physical responsibility of the city is meeting the ends of our expectations.
Thank you. Next, Joshua Alberg.
Great question. I think it starts with residents first and resident needs. I think elevating awareness around key issues, shortcomings that we have in our community. I talked about the capital improvement plan earlier, that we have $100 million in unfunded capital improvements, including parks, is really important. So you start with resident need and then kind of work your way backwards from there. So I think it's really an important starting point on what should be focused on when you're checking the boxes for community enhancement.
Thank you. Next, Rhonda Bland.
Fiscal responsibility means paying for our services while incentivizing development. We must start with a careful evaluation of tax increment financing, because TIF is a way to give developers a break. Without TIF, the city gets revenue from both the initial property tax and from taxes on increased property value as development progresses. But with TIF, the city only gets revenue from the initial property tax, while taxes on subsequent development are diverted to developers' pockets or discretionary city projects. Ultimately, this means that TIF districts forfeit future tax revenue that would normally be spent on our schools, roads, and public services. In fact, $330 million in future tax revenue is currently tied up in existing TIF districts. Now, TIF isn't all bad. It gave us Centennial Lakes, but we can't overuse it. Sometimes, TIF districts are being placed in the wrong places, and they are not being terminated once development is complete. Too much TIF means more development, more traffic, more people. In other words, means more strength on public services with less ability to pay for them. The question is, do the benefits outweigh the costs?
Thank you. I'm going to repeat the question just to make sure everybody's caught up, because it's to be a while. What is your plan to maintain fiscal responsibility and a balanced budget on behalf of Edina taxpayers? Where would you focus in the budgeting process? And next, we'll hear from James Pierce.
Thank you for the question. In my role as a global business leader, in terms of budget management, there are a few key things that I always focus on. The first one is, what do we need to do and why? And I think that speaks directly to what the residents' needs are. And then, at that point, it's evaluating every project on its own merit, a cost-benefit analysis, if you will, for every development project, every project that we focus on, and every service that we pay for. And then the last thing I would say is to ensure that we have a good strategy and alignment across all of the stakeholders for that strategy. And I think that also ties into our comprehensive development plan. We have to look at all of that and make sure that we have the revenue to do the things that we need to do. And that's why I start with, what do we need to do and why?
Thank you. Next, Janet Katoue.
Yeah, thank you for that question. Like I say, I do work for the government, and in our state constitution, there is a mandate that we need to balance the budget. So working for the city as a council member will be operating under the same lens of operating with fiscal responsibility where every item is already allocated funds initially. And if I was to be fortunate to sit on council, the one area I would like to focus on is public safety. It's one of the highest budget items on our city. And we'd like to see opportunities of where we can still maintain public safety and still be able to manage that. As of the last three years, that is one place that has continued to increase. And again, using data to inform, that will be really critical. It's not that I'll just chop it off and say, this is where we cut, but definitely balance the return on investment. We are increasing this part of our budget, and what are we getting in return? Is there something else that can be looked at to explain why we are spending more money on public safety? Thank you.
Thank you. And last, we'll hear from Carolyn Jackson. It looks like you're ready now.
All right, can you hear me better? Okay, can you please repeat the question?
Sure. What is your plan to maintain fiscal responsibility and a balanced budget on behalf of Edina taxpayers? Where would you focus in the budgeting process?
Well, the most important thing is to make sure that our revenues match our spending. So you go through the budget and say, can we afford to do this? And the budget's a long document, it's about 200 pages long, and we want to make sure that our budget is reflecting our values. The tax dollars that are coming in, the city council had a discussion this week of looking at what we want to set the levy at, and the question is whether we want to increase the taxes to cover our increased costs, or do we want to keep our taxes flat and start cutting? I think with COVID-19, we're going to have an issue of what our revenues are going to look like, and we want to make sure that we have a strong community discussion about where we're spending our money, and we want to make sure that we have plenty of revenue to cover our expenses. I'm a little concerned about the amount of consulting that the city hires. It's kind of an unknown amount, and I want to make sure that we're reflecting that people understand where the money is going and that there's transparency in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. And your sound is working now, so thanks for bearing with us. Now we'll move on to a new question. As an Edina resident, how have you connected with voters in this difficult COVID period? And previously, what connections and groups have allowed you to hear what other residents think? We'll start with Janet Katoue.
Definitely, the COVID-19 has changed voter contact and how we do it. I have been phone banking. I have been dropping lists to get in touch with voters. I have had the opportunity to be on Zoom call with Edina Indivisible. That's one way I've reached out. I've also hosted my own meet and greet with friends in the community to be able to communicate and tell them why I run, why I would like to be the next representative on council for them. And I've also hosted a meet and greet via Zoom. So there is opportunity when challenges come about. I have had to learn the many different options there are to reach the voters. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, Rhonda Bland. Turn on your mic.
Is my mic on? Can you hear me now?
Now we can.
Thank you. First, I want to apologize for the telephone ringing before. I should have turned my phone off before this all started, but I apologize. What I've been doing is, there's nothing, there's no good substitute for face-to-face talking to voters, but of course, COVID has made this all very difficult. We've had some neighborhood gatherings, not more than 20 people, but everybody very respectfully, six, eight feet apart. We let people know this in advance. Some people bring a folding chair. We meet on people's driveways. Everybody is wearing a mask, but people want to know, they want to see me, they want to talk to me, but I can't shake their hands. In addition, I've done some door knocking. Again, I stand eight feet back when somebody comes to the door, and I never go into somebody's home. They come out onto the steps, I pack out onto the grass, and we have a conversation with our masks on. People really appreciate that I'm reaching out to them. Of course, in addition, we have the website, we have all kinds of ways people call, I make myself available on the telephone, and so far, it seems to be working.
Thank you. Next, Carolyn Jackson.
Thank you. I view this question as a question not just of how we're campaigning, but how we as a community are continuing to stay in touch during COVID-19. I think this is a time when we really appreciate our parks and our system of sidewalks and walking in the neighborhood. I live very close to the Nine Mile Creek Trail, and it has been a lifesaver, going out and just seeing other people, especially in March and April when we were all so shut inside. I'm very appreciative of the wonderful opportunities we have to get out and about in our city. I'm also thankful for the patience that everybody's had in making the transition from face-to-face meetings to meetings online, not just with city opportunities, but also with every organization out there. And I know we're all being stretched to have our patience stretched, and we've been such a great community, taking the time, figuring out ways to continue to meet. I've been outlet dropping, I've been making phone calls, I've been having Zoom calls and socially distanced or respectful distance, and it's great to see people, but I love those parks.
Thank you. Next, Joshua Alberg.
It's a really good question and extremely important, as Carolyn talked about during a pandemic. My strategy's really been around phone calls, small gatherings, walking with flyers, getting out and talking to my community members about things that matter most to them, outreach through Zoom calls and virtual conferences has been an irreplaceable tool during the pandemic. In addition, I'm a member of the Edina Neighborhood Coalition. I've led grassroots efforts, as I talked about, and efforts to enhance connectedness by way of sidewalks in our community. And it goes back to really leading with listening first and truly listening, hearing, and acting. And I think that's going to be a need of the council member. The problem that we've had in the past is the listening hasn't been the focus. It's really been more of a top-down instead of a bottom-up approach. And I think that's really the opposite of inclusivity. So I think it's all about staying connected with people by way of personal one-to-one contact if possible. Otherwise, you find clever and creative ways to do so, even in absence of being able to do so in person.
Thank you. Next, James Pierce.
Thank you for the question. Unlike many of the other candidates, in terms of campaigning, lots of community meetings, using a lot of social media to get input. But I would say the one thing that's been most dear to me is doing one-on-one walks through the community. And so just that one-on-one time with the resident, understanding what that specific resident's issues are, and talking about things that I think might actually help. And so I've really enjoyed that, and I look to continue that as well. In addition to that, I've also had conversations with many of our business owners, again, trying to understand specifically what issues they have and how the city council could try and help address those.
Thank you. And finally, Ukasha Dekane.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Oh, okay, perfect. This is a good question. Actually, I'm a community organizer and activist, and my community residents outreach didn't start it in this campaign, it's something that started in the previous events that I've hosted. So how I was reaching out to residents was hosting a tea and talk on a garden or on our backyard or in parks. This is where I would bring a Somali, which is a good conversation starter, and then we'll be sitting in a sack hall, talking on issues that mattered to us. I've been in different backyards as we connected with the environment and nature. And also, I've been hosting a virtual events where we talked about the impact of COVID on women, the impact of COVID on communities that are facing these disparities disproportionately. We talked about the impact of COVID on small businesses, and all this was an effort where communities were coming together in collaborative efforts.
Thank you. Now we're going to change up our format a little bit and have a lightning round of a question. Oh, with this lightning round, you must answer in one sentence. I repeat, the answer is just to be in one sentence. The question is, what is your position on having organized garbage hauling in Edina? We'll start with Joshua Alberg, one sentence.
Well, I think I enjoy choice, as most people do, and I appreciate the ability to choose my own garbage hauler. I'm very happy with them. But on the other hand, it's also extremely taxing on our roadways and inefficient by way of damage to the environment. So I think it's worth considering alternatives.
That was a little longer than one sentence. Let's try to do better. Janet Katoue.
I am going to piggyback on what Joshua said. Yes, I am for a single garbage hauler to save the roads, which eventually, as a taxpayer, will be a benefit for us. Of course, having choices will be expensive. So, single garbage hauler, I support.
Thank you. James Pierce.
I am all for a free market, but today, I believe we have seven to eight choices, and making fewer, having fewer choices means fewer service vehicles on our roads.
Thank you. Carolyn Jackson.
The organized hauling process under state law is extremely complicated. I believe we have enough going on with different task forces and controversies in the city. It's a low priority for me to go through that process.
Thanks. Ukasha Dekane.
Yes, I believe that having a small, you know, like, kind of quantity of hauling trucks on our streets will reduce the road tier down, so I'm considering that.
Thank you. And finally, Rhonda Bland.
I think we need to save our roads, and I think we should look at the options.
Thank you. Now we will return to our regular format with the general public questions. Each candidate will again have one minute to answer. The next question is, many senior citizens have been particularly affected by COVID-19 in terms of isolation and personal finances. Would you, as a city council member, make it a city responsibility to solve these issues? Please explain your answer. And we will begin with Carolyn Jackson.
Well, that's a very good question. I guess my question is the extent to which the city council has control over that. I know that we've got the senior center, it's under construction right now, and people can't go there. We have a wonderful, vibrant senior population in Edina, and I know there's a lot of loneliness involved with the social distancing and the shutdown. I hope that we can do something about that. I would be in supportive programs, but I view that more as a community issue than as a city government issue. But we do want to make sure that our seniors are not left behind, unless it's maybe mental health services. We want to make sure that they feel included and remembered, but I don't know the capacity to which the city has to address that.
Thank you. Next, Joshua Alberg.
Let me give you a bit broader of an answer. I think the coronavirus pandemic has really put a massive strain on all of our well-being, certainly seniors. Beyond the obvious and legitimate epidemiological concerns... Beyond the obvious and legitimate epidemiological concerns, the ensuing shutdown has had far-reaching implications too. We talked a little bit about business earlier. Many families face unprecedented financial hardship, or teachers, parents, and students must navigate all these remote learning complexities. So I think one of the things that we can get into that really helps from a municipal standpoint is investing in parks and municipal areas where people can enjoy the outdoors, particularly when the weather is favorable. So that's probably where I would put my efforts first and foremost.
Thank you. James Pierce.
Thank you. One of the biggest concerns for our seniors is, in fact, isolation. My father is 85 years old, he lives alone, but he's embraced technology and lives a very vibrant lifestyle. And so as I was talking to Nicole from who leads the senior center, there is an idea that how could we provide more intergenerational programming for our seniors? And if we're able to do that with younger volunteers, something a little bit more forward-thinking, I think you can infuse a lot of different energy within our senior center. And I think for our residents, having that intergenerational programming, I think would be a really big plus for the senior community.
Thank you. Rhonda Bland.
The virus has turned our lives upside down, and for people who live alone, the isolation is incredible. The anxiety in the population is not overblown, it truly exists. I think that in communities, there are neighborhood communities, there are neighborhood associations. I think that's a beginning point. There are dozens of neighborhood associations. I think through them that we could identify who these seniors are. We could have Zooms with them so they feel engaged, so we're talking to them. Perhaps there could be organization within these neighborhood associations to see what the needs are, to see what people can do for them. I think that would be a beginning to reaching out to them and to generating good solutions for everyone.
Thank you. Ukasha Dekane.
Yeah, the pandemic have shown an evident disparities in many, you know, like ways, or many, it shifted our ways of living. So I was working with seniors in this COVID-19 and during the shutdown. These are the seniors who have been faced by technology barriers and language barriers. My wife have been making masks, and we have been donating to every senior places. So this is the reality that we are living in. So as a council, I think having our lens on that, on ways we can integrate our existing resources and ways we can promote a good relationship with seniors, that would be awesome. I was talking to some of the seniors, I meant the youth, and what we did is we connected seniors who had technology with youth who we are serving, so that they can learn from each other. And we call it Teach Me Dear program. So where they will learn, and they will get experiences, and seniors are never isolated.
Thank you. And finally, Janet Katui.
Definitely, COVID-19 has truly reshaped our environments significantly. We did not have an infrastructure of addressing any of the issues that have come up, afflicting specifically the seniors. So with the tentative infrastructure that is in place right now, if it's the 3-1-1 call as a one-stop shop for seniors to be able to make phone calls, if they are able to, that will be one thing that I believe the city can strengthen. So whatever we have temporarily right now responding to this emergency, we need to shoulder it, strengthen it. Definitely loneliness kills, and the seniors are the most vulnerable. All of us have been affected, but definitely, I recognize how the seniors are affected and strengthening what we have put in place in terms of meeting their food. If it was able to provide companionship, a one-stop shop, continue that, to be able to protect our seniors going forward, is strengthening that infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have a new question, different topic. What interests you about city government? How is serving on a governing body different from or similar to serving on the board of a community organization or nonprofit which you may have served? And we will start with Carolyn Jackson.
Thank you. So can you repeat the question again? That had multiple parts to it.
Sure. What interests you about city government? How is serving on a governing body different from or similar to serving on the board of a community organization or nonprofit which you may have served?
Okay, great, thank you. Well, I think, you know, the government is very different from private organizations for a lot of reasons, but primarily through the open meetings law and the data practices law. The government, the city government, is a public entity. So everything we do has to be available to public. So notice requirements, everything, slow everything down. With a private organization, you can make a decision and you can act right away, but with public, it's very slow. And so when you are looking at policies and you are looking at changes, it's about driving like a big train or a big ship. And so you can do big things, but unlike a private organization, you can't make decisions quickly. Thing I love about government is that, especially city government, is that you are very close to the residents, and you have a chance to really affect people's lives and increase the quality of their homes, their neighborhoods, and their interactions with other people. And that's a wonderful opportunity, but it does move much more slowly than a private organization.
Thank you. Next, Ukasha Dekane.
So what interested me in the city government is my passion and this, you know, like the purpose of my life in serving a call that will be greater than mine. So I have been coming to the city council meetings, and I've seen, and I've realized that there is a voice of diverse that's missing in the Edina City Council. So stepping forward to bring a young, millennial, working-class background voice that will collaboratively bring all neighbors and ensure that all voices are heard is what made me to run for a city council. And as well, I was passionate, even when I was young, to serve on the government. And the city council is the legislative body of the city. So I want to pave the way for many young people who can say, yes, I'm strong enough to serve on any city council, including Edina City Council.
Thank you. Next, Joshua Alberg.
Thanks for the question. I think my interest is a lot like Ukasha there. My interest starts with the people, it starts with the residents. People truly are of interest to me. Edina residents, I am consistently amazed at their passion, their intelligence, and how they truly want to get involved and shape the future. Frankly, it's energizing to who I am. I think the difference in scope between public and private enterprise is really the need to treat all people equally. It's not an organization that's pyramid nature, it is flat. So you've got to treat everyone equally, make sure that you're getting all the voices heard, and make sure that everyone has an equal voice, no matter how meek it may be in every corner of the community. So it's really energizing again to me, and I get excited in that respect.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Janet Katui.
Yes. What interests me in the governing body is it's local. Politics are local, and they do have a powerful way of influencing the community. I get interested in government because the zoning and planning tool has been a powerful tool at the local level that has been used to influence neighborhoods in a very powerful way. We can historically trace roots of how we are living currently to how zoning was used back in the 20s. So, and then that tool is also tied to how our schools are performing. I currently live in the Rithfield School neighborhood, and there is a stark difference between that. So I do understand the power of a local governing body and how it can shape policies and the outcomes of those policies. That is why I get involved to be in the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Rhonda Bland. You're still muted, Rhonda.
Sorry. Am I better now? Am I unmuted? Okay. We stand on the shoulders of the people who've come before us. They created the community that brought us to Edina. We are all here because we want to be here. The city has been so good to me. I feel an obligation to help to work to create the legacy that will go forward. When I meet people in the community and I see the bright faces of the children, and I talk to seniors, and I talk to people at all different levels, I understand how they feel about the city, how they want it, what they appreciate about the city, what may not be quite so right. But I realize that perhaps I could make a change, I can make a difference, and I can make it better, so that 10, 20, 30 years down the road, everybody can be proud of what they have and understand that the legacy that we have put forward will be a valid and a very good one.
Thank you. Finally, we hear from James Pierce.
One of my favorite quotes is from Nelson Henderson that says, "The true meaning of life is planting trees without ever expecting the benefit from their shade." And I think local government is, you're close to what's happening. It's very different than the executive branch. And so the story I'll tell, my wife and I were walking through Centennial Lakes with the gentleman who was the foreman when Centennial Lakes was built. And just to see him walk through Centennial Lakes and talk about that project that he worked on was just powerful for me personally. And so I think in the role of the city government, it will be really wonderful to know that we can make decisions that impact residents every day. And as it's our neighborhood, and so it's our community, and it's just powerful to be a part of that.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to a new question. From 2008 to 2018, over 800 comparatively affordable single-family homes with average values of $421K were torn down and replaced with new homes with average values of $1.165 million. Should the city intervene in the market and slow the loss of comparatively affordable single-family homes? Please explain your answer. And we will start with Rhonda Bland.
Thank you. It seems to me when we talk about affordable housing, we're not only talking about multi-housing units, but we're also talking about single-family units. And the city does the best job when they work with the nonprofit organizations to create a solution, a private-public situation. Under the auspices of nonprofits like Aon and Common Bond in partnership with the city, affordable housing could be established through our Affordable Housing Trust Fund if we were to buy up some of these properties and make them available to people. These could be established, and they would be in perpetuity, and that would be a very good thing for the city.
Thank you. Next, James Pierce.
I think that there are two facts that are undeniable. Edina will continue to grow, and we're landlocked as a community. And so with those two facts, we have to have higher-density living spaces. Now, we can debate the rate of growth, but not those two facts. And so I do believe that it would be good for the city council to look at policies and ordinances, construction codes, things like that, to help us figure out how we can have more affordable options across all income levels and that work for all stages of life. And I do think that that could include slowing down the tear downs and the rebills, because that definitely causes an issue if you take affordable homes that may be worth $450,000, and you tear it down, and you create homes that are $1.2 million. If we continue that trend, we won't have a healthy life cycle.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Ukasha Dekane.
Can you repeat the question for me, please?
Sure. From 2008 to 2018, over 800 comparatively affordable single-family homes with average values of $421K were torn down and replaced with new homes with average values of $1.165 million. Should the city intervene in the market and slow the loss of comparatively affordable single-family homes? Please explain your answer.
Yes. So the affordable homes are in need right now, more than ever, in these economic-assetting times. Based on the city's 2019 quality of life survey, only 50% of residents' overall quality of life in Edina was excellent, from 90% on 2011. Only 57% of residents say Edina is heading in the right direction, down from 92% in 2011. And the top reason was the redevelopment. So I want to be a voice of moderation and take a balanced, thoughtful approach to making redevelopment decisions and affordable housing while requesting continued community inputs. My formal education in community development will be especially valuable because Edina is a fully-developed suburb. Each development decision caused a ripple effect via its impact on infrastructure, demand for public safety, and services, and et cetera.
Thank you. Next, Joshua Alberg.
I would agree that single-family homes are extremely important as really the backbone of the community, which is in low-density housing. We've lost over 800, as you just mentioned a few moments ago. And although we can't really stop the behavior because it's a free market, we can explore ways to incentivize keeping people in the existing structure to maintain the character of our neighborhood, which is treasured. It's especially troubling because it causes stress by way of taxes on our community members who are aging in place as well, pricing them out of their homes. So it's very troubling. I think we could find solves if we think creatively. However, as it relates to the tear downs, the key to making tear downs minimally disruptive really all boils down to enforcing compliance with existing zones, codes, and regulations. And the city council actually amended an ordinance restricting the hours of outdoor construction, which was a step in the right direction, but it really all comes down to compliance.
Thank you. Next, Carolyn Jackson.
It's a great question. I know in talking to people across the city that our residents really value economic diversity and housing diversity. But stopping the tear downs is fighting market forces. The land underneath is extremely valuable, and there's a strong incentive to build a larger home on these lots. So there are three ways that I've found, and I would love to see others, to address this. One is with zoning. And you can zone away tear downs, but that means that individual homeowners would lose value in their asset. You can increase density so that when a building gets torn down, instead of a single-family home, it would be a two-family home. That's a very controversial answer, but it is an option. The third option is to use public dollars to preserve these homes. And the Land Trust is one way in which we're currently doing that. It's a very cumbersome process and very limited. The question I think goes to, do we want to use public dollars to preserve these homes? I would love to see a way to do that that is acceptable to the broad community. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Janet Katui.
Yes, and this is a question to wrestle with, and yes, it's a private transaction with citizens. However, as a city that we want to thrive and be vibrant and have everyone in the community succeeding, I believe the city council should have a first right of refusal when the tear downs come on market. If we have money like in the housing foundation that has been paid by developers who do not want to build affordable housing, that money could be redirected to have the right to purchase that property and probably preserve it as an affordable home for a young family that is trying to buy and establish their family in the community. And that will be benefit. Having all types of homes from low, middle, and high is a balanced way of maintaining a healthy, vital community. It's just like when you buy your portfolio, when you're making investments, you don't put all your money in one bucket. So you want a balanced portfolio in order to have longevity and survive. The same concept applies to our housing. Low, middle, and high in a balanced format to maintain a healthy community would be fantastic. That would be my suggestion if I get to sit on council. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to hear from Susan Clark. I think she has a suggestion of which questions to wrap up with as we are winding this down. Susan, I'm not sure what you're asking, so go ahead. Your mic is muted.
Yes, I'm, okay. Thank you. I would cancel question six, question seven, and then you can go on to eight, then maybe 10.
And 11? I think we have two more.
Okay. Two more, I would do seven, and then I would do 11.
Okay. So here we go. Next question, what is the best direction for the city in terms of housing density, especially in the Southdale and Grandview area? And we will begin with Rhonda Bland.
Thank you. The Southdale District Plan suggests that there will be more density going forward. The problem, the issue really becomes how it affects the area with regard to traffic and bringing more people into the city. I think we have to be concerned about scale. Scale is really, really interesting. And the fact is, we have 47,000 people who come to Edina every day to work. And if we can create housing for these people in our community, that would be a very good thing. But I do think it has to be thoughtful, and I think that informing neighborhoods about this so we can get better input. Currently, only 1,000 feet, within 1,000 feet, people are informed. I think we have to go much beyond that because the impact is huge. If this is going to look very, very different in 10 or 20 years, I think the impact has to be considered in a more holistic way. The other thing is, what are we going to do about Tiffin this area? That's a major consideration as well completely as well. So these are some of the issues I would address.
Thank you. Next, Carolyn Jackson.
Thank you for the question. That's a great one. So we've got these small areas, which Southdale's not really small, but special areas where the comprehensive plan views their ability to grow. The question goes to both Southdale and Grandview. I'll go to Grandview first. It's a jewel of a neighborhood for our commercial district. I would love to see some low-income or some senior housing put in there, a senior cooperative. It's a wonderful opportunity. You can walk to the grocery store, you can walk to a coffee shop. There's an opportunity there to get some housing to keep our seniors in the community and keep them active. In Southdale, we've got the Southdale Experience Design Guidelines, and that talks about breaking up these superblocks into 200-foot blocks that are walkable, to human scale, protective of light and air, green space and water. So it's a very human level. It will be denser, but the design is to make sure that it's a comfortable experience being there. We do need workforce housing, and there's a demand for apartments, but it always has to be built on a human scale according to the design guidelines.
Thank you. Next, Ukasha DeKane.
Yes, so most of the Edina residents are concerned to our density and traffic, as I kind of connected with everyone in the process of this campaign journey. During the comprehensive plan process, our city official worked with the Metro Council staff to increase our 2040 population plan by 20%. There is an obvious disconnect there. I mean, we just can't understand why. Edina's 2018-year comprehensive plan opened with a statement, "Our city will grow in response to residents' wants and needs." Unfortunately, the proposed 2018 comp plan is built on a much different premise, population growth. So when we talk about density, is it something that we will be accommodating, whether it's affordable housing, whether, how are we in traffic? How are we accommodating that? And does the residents have an input on that?
Thank you. Janet Katui.
As we know, we are a landlocked city. All our land has been used up, so definitely building up is the one option we only have. And as we know, the city is on its own for, 7% of it is for multi-housing or higher up. Most of it, 93%, is on for single-family. So the density part is the only way we can increase affordable housing as far as I'm concerned, and that's at least maintaining the single-family homes. So when it comes to traffic patterns, we have, like Rhonda Bland said, 47,000 people coming to work into Edina. Our traffic is being driven by people who are coming into our city to work. If we were to have homes, perhaps that will reduce that traffic pattern. And before any density is built, there is a feasibility study that is carried out by the developer to be able to establish, how is that going to impact the current infrastructure from environmental to economic and the daily living of people? So I stop right there.
Thank you. Next, Joshua Alberg.
Thanks for the question. I think it's really, really important. Southdale is a perfect example of overburdening in infrastructure by way of density. As it relates to affordable housing particularly, we've simply hit the point of saturation, and we have a lot of projects that are already up in the air. I think now's the time for a reflective pause and collect our thoughts and see how we've already impacted the area. Density brings more traffic and also increases pollution in the area as well. My perspective is that affordable housing does not have to mean overpopulation or densification. We need more affordable housing in Edina, no mistake. But the building new affordable units is extremely inefficient way of accomplishing that goal. Edina already has more than 9,000 multifamily units. That's 40% of all homes in Edina. If we can engage the public or nonprofit, engage in public and nonprofit partnerships like Common Bond, which was mentioned earlier, to convert even 7% of those units, then we could meet our affordable housing target for 2030 without increasing our population density. Moreover, we can make these permanently affordable as opposed to our current process in which units revert to market rate in 15 years.
Thank you. And finally, we'll hear from James Pierce.
I do believe that we need higher-density living spaces, but I am for a balanced approach to development. And I do believe that thinking about repurposing commercial property, and I think that's the key word, repurposing commercial development and properties like a Southdale. And actually, there are other communities where the malls are just closing because of COVID. And so I think it's a different environment now. So I think we could repurpose an area like Southdale to have higher-density living. We could make those centers smart centers, smart, smart, green areas for the community. And I think if you can do, if you could do something like that, then you're able to preserve the look and feel of our low-density neighborhoods, but you're able to have these very vibrant city centers that may have multi-generational living spaces.
Thank you. Now we'll have one last question before the closing statement section of this forum. So the question is, if you were on the city council, what specific climate policies and actions would you want the city council to adopt and undertake during your term? And we will begin with James Pierce.
Thank you. So the city has done a good job of approving projects that drive things like pedestrian traffic. As I've been out talking to residents, that's one of the things that they really love, that at some point bike paths might be connected, and you could go from one neighborhood all the way downtown if you chose to. And so I think those types of things are very, very creative. I also think, the example that I gave earlier, I think it would be really awesome for us to have a smart city in Edina. In my global travels, I've seen communities that have solar panels, they use water efficiently, they have smart devices inside those homes, and many of those smart centers use a third of the energy that a comparable area used in 1990. And so I think if we could do something like that, and again, repurposing maybe a Southdale or a Grandview area to develop property like that would be awesome for Edina.
Thank you. Next, Janet Katui.
Yes, thank you for the question. Climate actions is real. As we see the West Coast burning, that is a direct result of our human actions. And whatever we can do to change that cause, the reason to do that is now. And getting our legislature to be able to renew the policies of awarding credits if you convert your home or put solar panels on your home is one way I would definitely advocate. If we are able to do it at the city level, I would definitely advocate. And there is an appetite for renewable energy in Edina. I do serve on the Business Energy and Commission, and we do have the desire to have renewable energy in our community. I know that the Galleria has charging spots or parking spots for people with electric vehicles. I am very proud that our city has an electric vehicle fleet. So we do have our contribution to reducing climate change, and I would definitely be advocating for those going forward if I get to be elected to be city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Carolyn Jackson.
Thank you. So the two largest contributors to greenhouse gases are buildings and transportation, traffic. So looking at traffic, we've got in the comprehensive plan a twin-loop process of putting in sidewalks and bike paths so that we can get around town under our own power, whether it's by walking or by biking. And we're looking for ways to reduce traffic, things like district parking in our commercial districts so that you don't have to take your car to move from business to business when you're running errands. You can park and walk centrally. And the idea of district water, district parking, district energy, all very good. I'd like to see a green building policy where the city of Edina puts forward best ideas and best practices for buildings to be green, and just a general hub on the city website of all of the green practices that we're currently doing so that we can lead by example, because most of the energy does come from the private sector, or most of the greenhouse gases come from the private sector, and we can be an information hub to help best practices across both the private and the public sector.
Thank you. Next, Ukasha DeKane.
Yes, that's a great question for a climate activist. I will help the city in my sustainability lens to ensure the city has a climate action plan. I am a champion for the UNA/USA ensuring that every city in Minnesota is having a climate action plan for 2040 zero gas emissions. You know, we have to have a strong goal that will reduce the gas emission to our airspace. So one thing we also did at this ceremony that came from the community is having a community discussions where climate issues are being discussed. And we did this alongside, I did, I personally did that alongside with energy and environment commissioners, where we brought a diverse community to voice their issues that mattered to them. And one thing they said was, the three ordinances need to be enforced. Residencies needs to be, you know, like recognized for their efforts. So we need the city, I will ensure the city recognizing the residencies for their environment efforts, and as well have the youth, you know, like being centered in these discussions.
Thank you. Next, Joshua Alberg.
So I think curbing climate change is extremely important in Edina, the nation, and our planet. There are a few things I think that Edina can do to help combat climate change. One of those things would be to continue to support infrastructure enhancements that allow for multimodal transportation in the city. This is framed up really well in our Living Streets Plan, which we already have on the books. I think we just keep the road there and make investments as we can. And I think included in that, I would push for preservation of parks and green space. We've woefully underfunded them in the past. I would fund them. I'd say now more than ever, residents are wanting and really needing that green space in our city. So I think preservation of the parks is absolutely paramount. Those are a couple of things we can do right away.
Thank you. Finally, Rhonda Bland.
Thank you. We are neither the federal government nor the state government, but at the city level, we can review and approve developments. That's where we need to make a difference. There are very specific actionable steps that the city council could take for every proposal to address what is the challenge of our time. We need environmental impact statement, surveys, pardon me, before development. We need to look at the carbon footprint. We need to look at the green space ratio. We need to look at groundwater impact and infiltration. We need to look at the density impact because people and traffic equal pollution. We need to look at sustainable methods and the materials that are integrated. We must encourage developers to frame their decisions in terms of environmental, social, and human impact for the long term rather than on just short-term gain. We need an educational infrastructure so that we can bring people along with environmental emphasis.
Thank you. You know, we don't have time for another question full-length, but I'm going to turn one of them into a lightning round for you guys. So answer this in one sentence. The former public works site at 5146 Eden Avenue has sat vacant for 10 years. What do you see as the highest and best purpose for this parcel of public land? So in one sentence, real quickly, we'll start with Joshua Alberg. You're muted. Josh, you're muted. Try again.
Thank you, thank you. I think we should put it to public use and turn it into a park at a bare minimum for the time being.
Ukasha DeKane.
Yes, we can put it in a public use and turn it into affordable homes.
Rhonda Bland.
I think it's up to the people. I think the idea of a park or perhaps senior living, particularly since it's close to Grandview, I think that might be a very good use for it.
Carolyn Jackson.
Given the concerns that I'm hearing across the community about our level of indebtedness, I'm not interested in building a park there at this point. That'd be expensive. I'd like to see some senior affordable housing there. Thank you.
James Pierce.
I would like to see us consider a community center in that space and provide intergenerational programming for some of our seniors as well as housing.
Thank you. And Janet Katui.
Yes, given the COVID-19 period post it, we are going to have very different needs that emerge. I would like for, with the new environment we are in, for that to be reconsidered as to what we need to build there, and definitely listen to the community as to what should go there. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for cooperating with that lightning round. Now we'll move into the closing statement section of the forum. The candidates are invited to make two-minute closing statements, and we will start with Ukasha DeKane.
Thank you so much. This was the most informative and amazing forum I have ever attended. So earlier today, I asked four questions. Is there a diverse voice in the city of Edina, especially in the Edina City Council? No. I am that diverse voice, and I will bring experiences and perspective that will be helping the city thrive. Is there a physical responsibility in part of the city? I'll say responsibility is one thing. Are we achieving what residents want as a result of that physical responsibility? Are we responsible in what way? Is this expressing itself? Do we have facilities that we should have here to be physical responsible? And how are we setting them up? Decisions that need, are we, you know, like incorporating data in our decision-making? Decisions need to be made on databases and data only. Political opinions and worldviews has nothing to do with that. I don't mean I have it, but as I'm elected, I will not use that in data and decision-making process. Does the city have a climate action plan? No, we don't have a climate action plan. And as we try to see the evidence of the climate effects, how are we handing our environment to the next generation? I want to help in a sustainability lens, the city have a climate action plan in a collaborative way where communities' inputs and values and ideas, especially the young generation, are considered. I am a millennial, someone with a working-class background, someone with a small-business ownership background, and with a leadership background as well. And I really appreciate my perspective, ideas, and voice to be represented in Edina City Council. If those issues matter to you, and if you want to see a city council that's progressing and thriving... to you, and if you want to see a city council that's progressing and thriving and meeting the needs of every citizen, then I am your candidate. Vote for Ukasha DeKane.
Thank you. Next, Carolyn Jackson.
Thank you. And thank you again to the League of Women Voters for putting this forum on this evening. I am really pleased to hear from all the candidates, their concern about engaging the citizens across the thing. I think that everybody who has spoken has said that this is a deep value of mine, and I'm encouraged that that's where we're going to be going in our city council. When I run a meeting, the one thing I do is make sure that everybody at the table gets to talk, and then we'll say, who's not at the table? We want to make sure that people feel included, and people get the opportunity to weigh in on city decisions. This is very important to me, and I think to all of us who are running here tonight, which is great. I also look for effective solutions. There are a lot of ideas, or a lot of abstractions, but what are the powers that the city has, and what can we do, and how can we get our great ideas effectively enforced and put into place? That's very important to me. Also, we are going to be stewards of the future of the city. We want to see the city welcoming to the entire life cycle, from having babies here and bringing children into our schools and our community, to being able to retire and see our golden years here in the community that we love so well. So we want to look at the whole life cycle and the opportunities for people. And finally, we want to make sure that we hand on the planet to the next generation. And the next generation, which is going to be more diverse, and more things that we are fair, we are green, and we are building for the future of our community. Thank you. Please visit charleneforiedina.com. I would love to have your support, and I would love to have your vote between tomorrow and November 3rd. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Janet Katoue.
Thank you, the League of Women Voters, for hosting this event. Thank you to all the candidates who have stepped forward to run. Our democracy depends on participation of all of us. And thank you for all the people who are watching. I am running to serve the city of Edina, and serving on the city is about listening to everybody. For me, it's about good government, creating and maintaining a learning field that provides high quality for all that live in our community. It's about being there for the residents throughout the city. This is a goal that is at the heart of my campaign, all in for all of Edina. Being on city council is about citizen participation and transparent. It is about communicating with residents so that they can participate and inform council decisions. I live on the Southdale quadrant of our city, and it is one of the densely populated areas, and I truly believe that our voice needs to be heard, and that's why I run. All citizens need to be represented, whether we are renters or homeowners. Our voice need to be heard at the city council level, and our needs be met. As a city council member, I will champion transparency, fairness, and the communication needed to ensure that Edina moves forward sustainably. Being a city council, I am going to be committed, and it's one of the time-consuming events. I already do serve on the Edina Task Force. I serve on the Business Energy. I serve on the Communications Feedback, and all these will be very important in forming my decisions and giving me the experience that is necessary to be your next city council member. I also serve, I champion affordable housing very close and dear to my heart, and I believe for a thriving community, all of us need to be able to live comfortably, because where we live does determine what access we have, whether it is our jobs, our school, our healthcare, and there are social determinants that can be tied to our zip codes. So with that, I am asking for your vote between tomorrow and November 3rd. If you need to reach me, my website is www.janetforiedina.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Rhonda Bland.
Thank you. I want to begin by thanking the League of Women Voters Edina for presenting the forum this evening. In fact, as we've listened to this discussion tonight, we've heard many different issues and many different perspectives. The common thread in all of this is the future of Edina. Planning today will shape what we are in 20, 30, 40, and maybe even 50 years. How are we going to guide the path to the future that protects our Edina values, that are positive for our city, the reasons we came to the community, and at the same time, bend the trajectory over the short term and the long term to an even better tomorrow? With my history in the city that I call home, I'm uniquely equipped and positioned to understand the arc of our history, where we are today, and how to affect the future. I know Edina. I've lived it. In my statements and answers this evening, you have seen that my involvement, my deep and longstanding commitment to the city is the best guide to where we need to go. I hope everybody will enjoy, will join with me in participating in a nonpartisan commitment to the city that is apolitical, so that we can do the best for the future of Edina.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Joshua Alberg.
Thank you again for the time tonight, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to participate. And congratulations to my fellow candidates for having the courage to get involved as well. You've heard a lot of information this evening, and some of it is probably being committed to memory at this point, because it consistently comes up in this forum. Affordable housing is an ongoing concern in Edina, and it really is important. But there are more evident and well-documented, but when there are evident and well-documented loopholes that allow our development community to undercut our efforts, as well as well-documented concerns coming from the public by way of quality-of-life surveys, we have to get creative and search for alternate solutions to provide some balance. Apartments can be a solve, but it can't be be solved. The example I gave earlier about multifamily units is a real possibility if we focus our attention and accept that there are different solutions for the same problem. I want to bring this type of creative and critical thinking to the council, not an insider's perspective, a true resident's perspective. I want to challenge the current process of buy-in from the top down and replace it with an organic, resident-driven bottoms-up approach. My experience, reading grassroots efforts in the community, can help me accomplish this. I want to provide a fresh, younger perspective for other families like mine who are going to help shape the future of this community and will live in the wake of today's decisions. This bridge generation I represent needs places like Edina to call home, and we need to start speaking to them from a position of firsthand experience. I have that experience. Thank you again today, and I would appreciate your support for my bid for city council. I would ask that you log on to albergforcouncil, that's spelled albergforcouncil.org. I want to hear from you. I want to work for you. It's really your voice that should shape our Edina. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final candidate for this evening is James Pierce.
Again, thank you to the League of Women Voters, to my fellow candidates, and to all of yours at home. As I mentioned in my opening statement, many of you shared that you believe Edina needs a new perspective to solve complex challenges ahead of us. I've shared about my business background and my perspective as a global business leader, but in closing, let me share a bit of my personal story. I'm from Montgomery, Alabama. My parents grew up in Snow Hill, Alabama. Growing up, they worked in the same cotton fields my ancestors were slaves on. They graduated from Tuskegee University, my mom with two degrees in history and English, and my father a degree in industrial electricity. They worked hard, but they had to live in government-subsidized housing for 10 years before saving enough money to buy a home. Because at that time, no bank in Alabama would lend that much money to a young black couple. Now, that's perspective that keeps me humble and makes me listen intently as you share your truth with me, whatever that may be. Finally, I was born in 1969. That's four years after the Voting Rights Act was passed, and that made me the first person in my family who was born with the inalienable right to vote. I cherish our democracy, and I would cherish an opportunity to serve. Your vote is precious. It's what makes our democracy work. I need your support starting tomorrow, September 18th, when early voting starts. I'm excited to bring a fresh, new perspective to Edina, emphasizing strategic leadership, bringing people together, and supporting our seniors and families. And if you trust me with your vote, I will honor you by representing the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates, for participating in this forum and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. Thank you to the League of Women Voters of Edina for sponsoring this forum. The forum is being videotaped and will be made available for viewing online through the city of Edina and for rebroadcast on Edina TV, on Comcast's Channel 813 and Channel 16, the city of Edina's website, and on Facebook. It will be available on Edina TV YouTube the day after the forum. The forum will also be available for viewing on the League of Women Voters Edina website, lwvedina.org. Thank you for candidates, to, thank you to the candidates for attending tonight's virtual forum. Please remember to vote by Tuesday, November 3rd. This concludes the forum for the city council for the city of Edina. Thank you all, and good evening.
Good evening. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum this evening, and for the city staff for hosting us. These are difficult times, and you've been very flexible, and I really appreciate that, and I know all the candidates do. I'm Carolyn Jackson, and I'm running for Edina City Council. Our family moved here in 2000 for the great schools, the neighborhood parks, and the strong sense of community. I've lived in big cities, and I've lived in little cities, and I'm very glad that we chose Edina to raise our two daughters. I'm an attorney. I've worked in municipal finance, and I've advocated for cities and for voting rights. I've also been involved here in the community at home. Among the positions I've served are as president of the Countryside Elementary Parent Teacher Organization, as chair of the Valley View Middle School Site Council. I've been chair of the Energy and Environment Commission here in the city, and I've also as vice president for the Edina Community Foundation. My work with these organizations has taught me a lot about the values of our city. People in Edina value a green environment. We value being lifelong learners, and we value high-quality city services. As I've been campaigning across the city, whether it's through Zoom calls or walking around the neighborhood, I've been reminded of another thing about Edina. We have very engaged citizens. This is a wonderful asset, and I'm so proud to be a part of this community. I have been asked to run for the city council, and I would be honored to serve as your city council member. I thank you for tuning in, and I look forward to fielding your questions this evening. Thank you.